Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Thank you. I'll turn this over to Councilmember Kern for the pledge in a moment.
Thank you, Your Honor. All rise, please, for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rebound our heads, please, and offer a moment of silence for folks in the law enforcement and also firefighters who are out there each day attempting to keep our communities safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an addition. I'd like to add a new item 12, an executive session, please.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
A motion and a second to amend the agenda to include an executive session right after citizen comments.
Correct.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion, then, to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, approval of the minutes. The December 10th, 2018, regular meeting. Any changes? Somebody?
Seeing none, I move to approve the December 10th, 2018, meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended for December 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Two abstentions. Thank you. Next is the minutes for the January 7th, 2019 work session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve minutes for January 2nd as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Two abstentions. Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Start off with street levy.
This is a resolution to proceed to levy a renewal tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation as stated in Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G as amended of the Ohio Revised Code for constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be two mills, which is a renewal of an existing levy of two mills to run for a continuing period of time, and declaring the question of the renewal tax shall be submitted to the electors at the special election to be held May 7th, 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Thonore.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Happy to be before you this evening. We have talked quite a bit in some of our work sessions and some of our strategy sessions about this Capitol Street levy, and I'd just like to provide a little bit more information to you and the viewing audience at home about this current initiative. We have a two-mill street levy that's our Capitol levy. It'll be set to expire the end of 2019. We've had a lot of great success with this current levy, and this levy is specifically dedicated for Capitol improvements only. This levy does not cover operation, just our Capitol improvement. At the end of the presentation, I'll provide staff's recommendation. I know you have a couple of options to choose from this evening. Talking about our current existing levy, about 30% of the city's roadways have been resurfaced by the end of that first five-year cycle. This levy was focused on heavy emphasis on resurfacing, and then we've also addressed 60 centerline miles of roadway as part of our resurfacing in the last four years. We've also worked on our curb replacement program. This has been a repair and replace, not adding new curb, but repairing and replacing, and we've removed and replaced approximately 7.3 miles of curbing over that past four years. Some other successes that we've had, I know I've got a long list there, and I don't want to read through the whole thing for you, but it's hard to travel in our city these last five years where you haven't seen some major construction being done. I've seen a lot of new asphalt going down, a lot of curbs being replaced, and then a lot of other programs happening for widening projects, intersections being improved, side paths being added. Lots of projects have been highlighted on this list, but I'd also like to highlight just a couple. The North Fairfield Road Widening Project from Jonathan to Shakertown, that was one of the ones that was early in the levy cycle, and that would be south of 35. We've got a resurfacing program on North Fairfield that's still yet to come this year. Of course, our Dayton-Zenia Road Widening Project, which we all just lived through very recently, and then some survived. We have another couple of projects coming as well in the 2019 cycle that are a part of this Capitol levy. That Lilian Lane Extension Project's coming, and the big one, our Shakertown Extension, realigning Shakertown with South Alpha Belle and eliminating the at-grade interchange at 35. We've also been able to address a number of small storm sewer projects and culvert projects as well. We put a couple of pictures together. Sometimes the pictures are worth thousands of words. We've got our curb and replacement program. You can see kind of what those roads are supposed to look like with the black asphalt and new curbs installed. Grange Hall in Shakertown, a good example of an intersection improvement project from the four-way stop onto the signal, and then the Shakertown Widening Project down by Research Park, and then the picture of a storm sewer project that was done up on Graham Drive. I'd like to point out that our engineering team, led by Mr. Mormon and Mr. Smith, have done an excellent job with council support of applying for and receiving lots of grant funds. Over this five-year levy cycle, we've received about $15.5 million. The bulk of that coming from MVRPC, with some OPWC money sprinkled in as well and a couple of other sources. Again, this levy allows us to continue to stretch those local dollars and continue to apply for those grants, allowing us to apply for grants that we may not be constructing until five years from now. The dollars and the applications that we're putting together now likely won't be constructed for another five years. Stabilizing this revenue stream will allow us that continuity and that assuredly that those dollars are there for maintaining our city's infrastructure. This levy also allows us to address local projects that are not eligible for grant funding and allows us, this time, to start to shift some of the money that was being spent on resurfacing and curb to address the entire street based on council's priorities and that council management strategy. Staff's recommendation is to move forward with the two-mill renewal for a continuing period of time. This would be a dedicated funding source for the construction, reconstruction, and resurfacing and repair of roads and streets. It will cost residents $70 per $100,000 valuation of property, and this is, there is no increase in taxes as a result of this levy as it is a straight renewal. Levy will generate approximately $2.6 million annually as we move through. I know that you have a couple of options before you this evening to consider, and staff will be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're discussing Resolution 19-10. We're discussing Resolution 19-10. Any discussion? Any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
The only comment I would have for those watching at home or in attendance tonight, please know that the council has looked at this levy. It's been beneficial to date, I think, since it's been passed, you know, five years ago originally, or four years ago, I guess, and the dollars have gone to work for the citizens. This topic and this conversation for renewal's been discussed at length a number of times at a couple of different meetings, so I'm happy knowing my questions have been answered from staff, and I'll leave the floor open to the rest of the team here.
I'll add to that, if you don't mind, and that is that staff does such an excellent job of using this money so that it generates more money. Probably, is it more than double? Do we get, do we more than double this revenue in grants?
We would not, we would not double it in grants. On average, since 1997, one local dollar equates to about $5 that we're getting in federal and state money, so we're averaging about 20% local money and getting 80%.
Well, then, we're much more than doubling our revenue.
Not specifically for this five-year levy cycle, but for, over the long period of time, so.
All right. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add is that, again, we have met and discussed this at several work sessions, but along with the visual aids that Mr. Thonore presented and the fact that, you know, we drive the roads here in Beaver Creek, again, without the application and the applying for the grants, that has really been instrumental in helping us, you know, get into some of these projects, so the citizens, I think, can rest assured that their dollars are being spent very well and that for the items that are needed so that we can continue to have, you know, good streets and roads in our city, so I'm very happy with this opportunity for this levy.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion for resolution. I would like to recommend Resolution 19-10. I'd like to add placement of a two-mill renewal street levy on the May 7th ballot, and it would be continuous.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-10. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littoral.
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing.
Yes.
Councilmember Upton.
Yes.
Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you very much. Unanimous. Do I have a motion to amend something that's previously been adopted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. According to Robert's Rules of Order, I move to amend the agenda previously adopted by removing item...
Eight to...
...two, which is Resolution 1911, from the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. With that, we move on to B, which is Resolution 19-12, one of the park levy.
This is a resolution to proceed to levy a renewal tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation as stated in Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be 1 and 2 tenths mills, which is a renewal of an existing levy of 9 tenths mills plus an increase in 3 tenths mills to run for a continuing period of time, and declaring the question of the renewal plus increased tax levy shall be submitted to the electors at a special election to be held May 7th, 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Thonore.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. It seems I'm before you a lot this evening. Just a similar format that we just followed for the street levy. City councils grace us with the opportunity to provide them with a couple of different options for the park levy, also for the street levy. We've had those discussions and work sessions previously and continue to have those discussions again this evening. As we highlighted earlier, this current park levy is set to expire in 2019, and this levy, too, has been very, very successful. We'll provide a couple of options that are listed out on the agenda for City Council this evening and talk about what this levy does and what it doesn't do, and then also offer staff's recommendation for council's consideration this evening. Again, this levy was first passed in 2014. It is the primary operation for our parks and our senior center as well as our recreation services. The improvements at neighborhood parks, and we started a tree program where we started a replacement. We actually were able to impact every park inside of the city system. Some of them had larger improvements than others. You see pictured above, the irrigation at Veterans Memorial was improved, a shade structure was added to Royal Point, and then, of course, we had the improvement to LaFino Plaza, which was the extension of the senior center, and then also used by the general public for meeting space and program space as well. Additionally, in this levy, we were able to take care of things like the tennis court, resurfacing tennis courts at Dominic LaFino Park. We replaced 10 playgrounds as part of this cycle, four of which we received grant funding for. We replaced pieces of our skate park at LaFino Park, and we even replaced not the playground at Virgolito Park, but the surfacing below it, putting our first rubberized play surface in our system. Pictured above, we've also got improvements to our walkways and improved ADA access at Wardenshire Park. We've made trail connections and then made improvements to Shaw Park Playground, which we were no longer even able to get pieces for. The playground was so, was so old. And a big part of that campaign, as I was looking through, there was a lot of questions about, will we get rid of the mound slide? And the answer is absolutely not. We did not at the last cycle and dealt anticipate that in this cycle as well. Options for City Council's consideration, as I mentioned earlier, we had a number of work sessions, talked about this during our council management strategy, and then provided some options at a work session earlier for City Council's consideration. The options for City Council was a .9, a .9 with a .2 mill increase, a .9 with a .3 mill increase, and a .9 with a .45. At our last meeting, City Council moved on to the county auditor to receive certifications for all but the last one, which is reded out, so the .9, the .9 plus the .2, the .9 plus the .3, some for continuing period of time and some for five-year periods of time. Why the increase? We wanted to talk a little bit about this. This funding allows us to maintain our current operations. The .10 increase covers part of the inflationary factor over the next cycle of the levy. It includes the cost for goods and services, wages and healthcare, cost for our staff. .1 also goes for maintaining Rotary Park. One of the things that we talked about was taking ownership of Rotary Park and controlling our own destiny as it related to that, as the township was stepping out of the park business. And .1 goes to address a change in policy from a 15% fund balance to a 20% fund balance. This levy does not increase any staff, does not increase the repair and replacement or development higher than our current levels of our existing levy that is on the ballot today. This levy represents 55% of the revenue that we receive for the operation of our parks and senior services. You can see the second largest slice of that pie is the senior center, and as we indicated, the majority of that comes from grant funding through the Green County Council on Aging Levy. As you can see, our operations depend very heavily on this existing levy. One of the themes when we placed this levy on the ballot in 2014 was taking care of what we have. We're in the process of completing our Park Master Plan now with a steering committee, and we're hearing a lot of the same themes, take care of what you have. So staff is recommending a .9 mill renewal with a .3 mill increase for a continuous period of time. The levy will cost residents $42 per $100,000 valuation of their assessed property. This represents a $10.50 increase per $100,000 valuation, and the levy will generate approximately $1.5 million annually. These funds are dedicated only for operation, parks maintenance, repair and replacement, and redevelopment of our existing parks and senior facilities, and we're looking at continuous to allow the city to eliminate that risk of losing 55% of our total operating funds and stabilize our existing levels. If the levy fails, obviously, operations and maintenance and repair and replacement and development would be significantly reduced.
I just wanted to touch on why continuous. We felt that it was important enough that, to build a picture of using actual 2018 parks' expenditures and revenue as the example to help people see, well, how is this money actually being broken down? And when you look at it, the biggest part is park maintenance. That is maintaining the 23 parks, the land that is city-owned, taking care of, again, what we have. 21% of it's a senior center. A lot of people forget about that the seniors are part of the parks levy. Capital improvements, of course, misleading there, but that's the playsets and the sidewalks to the playsets and those types of improvements that we have been doing over the last four years, going on five years. Debt service is 5%, and of course, that represents the LaFino Center and the senior center remodel that we have took out a 20-year bond for when we did those improvements of totaling $1.9 million. I think we have, Bill can tell me, 18 more years, something like that, to go on that, so that helps us stabilize that as well. Another chart just to show you the expenditures, but the revenues with it. The senior center, as mentioned, Council on Aging gives, provides a grant of $230,000, so you see the senior center has 68.5% of the revenue reimbursed of the expenses, so that helps. But the recreational program as well, which I know a lot of people think about the recreation is kicking the ball and playing in, you know, the programs that we have and all that, you know, it only represents 13% of the budget, what we're talking about expenditures. And of that, through program fees and that we charge, and we are able to collect about 84% of the revenue back on that, so that really helps reduce what is, a lot of people picture parks as nothing but recreation, and it really, you know, shows that it's very little part of that represented of that, and of that, we're able to get reimbursement of that. And the next chart, Mr. Thonore already showed, that we are heavily dependent upon the levy that represents 55%. And why continuous? Again, Mr. Thonore has already explained that the fundamental of the plan that we've had in place for about two years about the foundation and stabilization of the city's revenue sources, we've been successful on continuous of one street levy and the police levy both pass overwhelmingly. With this, you know, we've already talked about almost 52% is the park maintenance of the 23 parks that are city-owned, 21% senior center that's going to continue to support the building and transportation and activities of the seniors at the senior center, and then, you know, about 5.5% is the debt service of the $1.9 million for now about 18 years left. So of that, you know, we're close to 78% of that are things we have to take care of. There's no ifs, ands, or buts unless we, you know, close the senior center or shift these costs to the general fund, which we could, but then there's decisions there because the general fund does not have sufficient dollars to even come close to covering these costs. The 13.4%, oh, 4% of the recreational programs that we have stated, that is a misconception that this category is much larger, but it's only due to the visibility. That means we're doing our job with the visibility, getting it out on Facebook and social media and advertising for all these, because, you know, they're very well utilized, all the recreational programs, which is a compliment to our park staff and getting that out, and people, a lot of people take advantage of that and enjoy it, but because they take advantage of that, that helps with the 84% of the revenue reimbursement that offsets those expenses. And then, of course, we talked about the repair and replace development of playground and structures, which is the quote-unquote "capital" part of that, but it's the same kinds of aspects that we're doing now in, you know, replacement of playgrounds and equipments that continue on. So I just thought that would be an interesting thing to show you an actual year, using 18 as actual expenditures and revenues to reflect in what kind of expenditures that we're talking about for the future. And we'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Discussion?
I just want to make sure we, and I, Mr. Thonore, I know he had mentioned it earlier, but just as a reminder that this does not include the golf course.
Thank you.
So...
Does not include the golf course? It does not include a new rec center?
That's exactly right. Splash pads?
It does not include any major capital that's on our dream list down the road, but not part of this project.
This is for the operations and to continue with the foundation that we have built for our fine parks department.
Absolutely correct. Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 19-12 for placement of a .9 mill renewal plus .3 mill increase for a park levy for the May 7th, 2019 ballot as continuous.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-12. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing.
Yes.
Councilmember Upton.
Yes.
Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you all very much. Resolution passes. Do I have a, do I hear a motion to amend something that's previously been adopted?
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the agenda previously adopted by removing items 6B, number two, number three, number four, number five, and number six.
Do I have a second? A motion and a second to remove items B, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Upton.
Yes.
Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral.
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Thank you very much again. Moving on, we move to item C, Resolution 19-20.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Enterprise TE Products Pipeline Company, LLC, for the city encroachment into an existing pipeline easement necessary for the Shakertown Road Extension Project.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As you know, one of our products that got approved in the 2019 capital budget was the extension of Shakertown Road. On the screen, I have a general schematic of the project. Essentially, as you know, we're going to be eliminating the current access point from Shakertown Road on the US 35, and we'll be extending Shakertown Road to the east to connect the factory road, and along with that, we have the realignment of Alpha Belle Brook Road. In building this project, it'll be necessary to cross an existing gas pipeline. I've highlighted the pipeline location in yellow on this drawing. There's really no avoiding it, and within that pipeline, there's an existing easement and where we need to get permission from the owner of the pipeline to construct our road through that existing easement. To that end, we've been in talks with the owner of the pipeline company, and we've negotiated an agreement, which you have before you, which really spells out the terms in which we'll be allowed to construct that road within that existing easement. Just to kind of summarize some of the items in the agreement, it spells out the construction procedures that'll need to be followed to protect the pipeline. You know, it conveys petroleum products. It's a very dangerous thing to mess around with, and a lot of caution is necessary in working closely with this pipeline. The city assumes some liability with this agreement because, obviously, it's our project, our contractor, where if something were to happen, the city would incur some liability for that. The agreement defines the nature of the encroachment that's being permitted, and there's also a requirement for insurance with this, and obviously, incurring that liability is necessary on us. It's prudent also to look at our current insurance and to make sure we're adequately covered in case the worst-case scenario should happen. I should mention, too, today, there were a couple of last-minute changes. I don't know if Steve would want to mention anything about those last-minute changes.
Well, really, one change in the agreement, and that was, the version you have was from the company, was not the correct version they sent up here as the final, but what happened was that they had actually put in there that we couldn't use heavy equipment, and this version before you on this section, no, basically, you couldn't use a roller to compact down the asphalt, to roll the asphalt. They've acknowledged that was, I mean, that was something that was negotiated for a number of days or weeks over to be able to do that. The version you have will need a motion to substitute to what you have before you. The other thing that just came in late this afternoon was they acknowledged that, under the terms of agreement, it's not crystal clear about the insurance, but they've now agreed that we don't have to, the city does not have to have, basically, the amount of insurance insuring this, you know, forever. It's basically during the period of time, I mean, once we're done, but as Ms. Mormon says, this is eye-pressure, very explosive materials in this... in this pipeline, and so they are, you know, I mean, they have to have somebody there, you can't, within so many feet, you have to hand dig, I mean, there's a lot of requirements. But this is the only way we can get this road done.
But are we going to have a special insurance policy for this project? Do we know?
Yes.
King has said yes. He's...
That takes a little pressure off.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions? So you need from us tonight, you need a motion to...
Motion to substitute the agreement before you for the one that was referred to in the agenda that... Yeah.
I'll receive a paper copy.
Yeah, you've got a paper copy in front of you, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll make the motion.
Please do.
Yeah, I make a motion to substitute the encroachment agreement with what was presented on paper this evening versus what was given to us in our work, excuse me, in our packet and referenced to in the agenda.
Now, this is replacing the document, so we'll need another motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, this is just simply replacing it.
So I have a motion and a second to replace the document with the most current document. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we would need a motion to approve Resolution 19-20.
I would move to approve Resolution 19-20.
Second. I have a motion, any discussion? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-20. All in favor, signal whether saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Resolution 19-19.
This is a resolution updating the city of Beaver Creek's purchasing card and credit card policy and procedures pursuant to House Bill 312 and in compliance with the Ohio Vice Code, Section 717.13A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The city implemented a purchasing card program in 2009. Before the program was implemented, detailed policies, procedures, and internal controls, including extensive training, were put in place. Each year, as part of our annual financial audit by the state, our purchasing card program has been audited. In the past 10 years, the auditor has never issued any exceptions or comments related to our purchasing cards. Recently, the auditor state proposed new legislation regarding credit cards that was passed as part of House Bill 312. House Bill 312 contains amendments to the ORC, which further regulate the usage of credit and debit cards. Our current policy is in compliance for the most part, except for a few minor items that need updated. Because of these amendments, we updated our purchasing card policy to be in compliance with the bill. One of the requirements of the new bill is that the city's purchasing card policy be adopted by council. Therefore, the city's purchasing card policy was changed from an administrative memo to an actual policy. Additionally, House Bill 312 requires that we include a list of all credit card holders and their spending thresholds, which has been included in the updated policy. Our updated policy also now stipulates that a report shall be filed with city council on an annual basis detailing all rewards received, which typically is a rebate based on annual card usage. House Bill 312 also requires that controls be formally adopted for store-issued credit cards. The city takes advantage of several store accounts, including, but not limited to Lowe's, Tractor Supply, Rural King, et cetera. The policy before you contains policies, procedures, and internal controls for the use and management of store credit cards. In order for the city to be in compliance with House Bill 312, staff is recommending approval of the updated purchasing and credit card policy. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Anyone? Please.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add a comment. Probably about a month or so ago, I met with Mr. Landrum and just casually brought up this, because I saw it in a bulletin for the Ohio Municipal League. He sent out an email to Mr. Casera and his staff stating that not only have we been following many of these practices in the past, but we've also exceeded those. So this is merely just housekeeping to comply with the state legislature and all their wills for House Bill 312. I did have one question, though. I noticed in the bill, there are a couple provisions, in general, debit cards are not authorized. There's a couple areas where they are authorized, being in receipt of possible grants, and also for law enforcement activity, whether it be, you know, purchasing of undercover work or what have you. So I didn't know if that was, I know in the policy it mentions there's no debit cards issued, but I didn't know if that was discussed at all during this drafting.
No, not specifically. So far, we've been able to cover, I know the police department does prisoner transports and stuff, and they've always been able to use the purchasing card to cover any expenses, so that's never been brought forward to us to review.
I just want to make sure, because I know those two caveats were carved into the bill to allow law enforcement, if they need it for their use, as well as, you know, receipts of grant monies. And my only other comment was, I know it's under the listing, it has the accounts payable card...
Yes.
Up to $300,000. Just curious what purchases could be up to that amount.
We actually use that card to pay the Bureau of Workers' Comp premium every year.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's like around $150,000 or so.
Sure, sure. I was just curious.
Yeah, and then we get a discount for using the card, a go-green discount, so it saves us money that way, too.
Right, right. Perfect. Well, thank you for this.
Cash back or what?
We do. That's basically what it is, is cash back. Mr. Casera really spends it to do it.
What's the procedure on vehicles' maintenance? Who does that?
Our police fleet or...
Automobiles, just the general automobile fleet, not the police.
I believe the majority of the maintenance is done in-house. I think it depends on if there's, you know, issues they can't manage. Yeah, they'll contract with the vendor.
Anyone else?
How long have you been doing the credit cards?
About 10 years.
10 years? Okay. I missed that number the first time. Thanks.
Anyone? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing no other comments, I move to approve Resolution 19-19.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries, thank you. Next, Ordinance 19-01.
This is an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations for the city of Beaver Creek, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, and to amend Ordinance 18-28.
Welcome back.
Thank you. When finalizing annual appropriations to be submitted to the county auditor, a formula error was noted with the 2019 Beginning Fund Balance for the Street Maintenance Fund, which is Fund 204. Because of this error, the Beginning Fund Balance for 2019 was overstated by $650,000. Therefore, appropriations for the current year need to be amended. A detailed analysis was completed on all the street funds, and it was determined that to balance the Street Maintenance Fund, the two projects, the Old Mill Lane Bridge and the Knoll Drive Storm Water Projects, need to be re-appropriated to the Street Levy Fund, which is Fund 203. It was also determined that the Kemp Road Widening Construction Project in the Street Levy Fund could easily be delayed to 2020. The Kemp Road Project is 70% funded with state and local grants, however, due to the timing of the grants and the grant's fiscal year, which begins June of 2019, rebudgeting this project to 2020 will have no effect on the project's start time, which is spring of 2020, or the estimated completion time. In order to correct this error, staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 19-01. Any questions?
Discussion? Anyone?
If I may, just to put everybody at ease, basically, we were going to plan the Kemp Road bid process at the very end of the year, probably September, October time period. Now, we'll probably begin it in December, because the funds will not be there. We cannot award the bid, because you have to appropriate, when you award a bid, you have to appropriate the funds. So it's just a matter of a little delay in the bid process, award the bid, come in early 2020, and like as Ms. Hathaway said, it won't take, construction time period wasn't going to begin until spring of 2020 to start with. So, you know, we had an error with the formula, but really, thank God, we found it, but there was no cost to a delay in any project, so that's the good news.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Hearing none, is, do I have a motion?
I would move to approve Ordinance 19-01.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 19-01. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, thank you. Next, liquor permit. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a request for a new liquor permit for Flyby LLC doing business as Flyby Barbecue. We received a request from the Department of Liquor Control for a new D5 liquor permit for Flyby LLC located 2733 Fairfield Commons, Suite 3A. The record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted for this request. Staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for the liquor permit, Flyby LLC doing business as Flyby Barbecue. I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is council time. Who would you like to start? Councilman Curran, would you like to start?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. We were privileged, Councilmember Van and Councilmember Littrell, the three of us were at a...
VFW.
Voice of Democracy dinner at the VFW, the 15th of the month, and that was very enjoyable to hear the speeches that were given by the young people, and it's good.
It is. It's terrific that the VFW provides this opportunity for kids to think about how important it is to be an American and to value their flag, and to hear these young voices be so strong, it's just, it's really nice. I appreciate it.
Obviously, feedback, the team appreciated you all being there, too, so, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Curran? Nothing at this time, Your Honor. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I just want to throw out a special thank you to our road crews, as they've been working the last winter storm, and I hope they stay warm in this next upcoming one, and really hope everybody stays warm. Make sure you're checking on pets that may be outdoors, checking on neighbors, make sure you see some movement in their house, and especially elderly neighbors or those that may be disabled, make sure everyone's doing okay in your neighborhood. Other than that, I've got nothing else.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Van?
I attended the Green Cats meeting last week as a council representative, I guess. Actually, there's not a council representative, but you appointed me to go to those meetings every once in a while. It's interesting, Green Cats does well, and they serve our community and our residents well, providing transportation to people who need bus transportation. They increase the size of their fleet and their job to help Green Inc. and the Atrium, part of the Department of Development of Disabilities Program, to get people with disabilities to those work opportunities and to the day center for people with disabilities. And the federal government has changed the rules, and those no longer are going to be part of the Department of Development of Disability. And during this transition, they've, they're losing that, Green Cats is losing that business. So Green Cats is going to reduce the size of their, what they do, by a third. It's a big deal. So they're selling off a bunch of the older vans that they've got, buses, and it won't make a difference to any, to most of our citizens in Beaver Creek, but it's an interesting situation, and there was quite a bit of discussion about people's jobs and how we were gonna, how they were going to dispose of the used vehicles. So just an interesting discussion, and I think that they do a good service for Green County, and that's good. There was comment that was made that in most counties, operation for bus service, like Green Cats, would be the primary, and then nonprofits would dovetail in to fill in the gaps. In Green County, it's just the opposite. We had a lot of nonprofits who provided transportation, like Beaver Creek's Senior Center and others, and so when Green Cats became viable, it filled in the gaps, so it's so different. It just was an interesting sentence that one of the board members made, and I thought, that is an interesting sentence, so I thought I would repeat it, because we're just a different animal than the typical county bus system. It's just interesting.
And Councilmember Van, the way I understand it, is that that's, Green Cats is going private? Or a portion of it?
Green Cats will be the same as it is. The bus services that serve the developmental disability is...
Private.
So that's why they're losing a third of their business, because those agencies are going to provide transportation to their people now, because they view it as a profit center. And so they're going to provide that, as they transition to be private, privately managed developmental disability services, they are going to take that profit center with them. Yeah. Just an interesting, it was an interesting discussion. It lasted longer than I expected, but it was interesting.
All right. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Councilman Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only comment I have this evening is I was contacted by a newly developed group, and it's a little unfortunate by why this group was created, but it's the Dayton Airport TCA Relief Effort. I was actually contacted, because I had a mutual contact within the group, but this group is pretty simple. They provide support, whether it be groceries or other support, financial means, to those that may be affected to the federal shutdown. Clearly, we all know that there is a window now where hopefully, the members in DC can work it out, but in lieu of that, this group continues to receive donations as well as accept any volunteers. If you like to have, if you yourself are affected or would like to contribute, the contact is Rebecca Karason, and she can be reached by R. Karason, that's R-K-A-R-A-S-O-N at yahoo.com. So if you're affected by anything, being that we are definitely in the area where, I know people who have been affected personally, this is another avenue where people in the community are getting together privately to hopefully support each other, so please reach out if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littrell?
I just have two things. One is I want to congratulate our staff for being nominated for the 2019 Civil Rights Transportation Symposium Awards, which was Jeff, Nick, and the team, so congratulations on that. That goes to attest to your hard work that you all put in, so thank you very much for that. The second thing is, I just wanted to follow up with the Veterans of Foreign Affairs, Foreign Wars, sorry, Foreign Wars, that Councilmember Van and Curran and I attended for the Voice of Democracy. And just to follow up with what they said, I would just like to personally thank, these are the winners of Why My Vote Matters, actually, there was three, a Kathleen Simmons, a Benjamin Ward, and an Anna Yang. Excellent, just wonderful to see the youth that we have today. And then we had for the introduction, for the Patriots pen, which was absolutely wonderful, we had a Gabrielle Hager, a Rebecca Ann King, and Rachel Ward. And then, everyone was just wonderful, the students were wonderful, there was people from the school board there. And the winner for Why My Vote Matters was Benjamin Ward, and the winner for the Patriots pen was his sister, Rachel Ward. So I wanted to, and they are homeschooled, so just a wonderful group of kids, and then we, I thought was very special, and I had never seen this before, which I, sorry to say, was the meaning of folding the flag, the 13 folds of the flag, so I just thought that was exceptional. So I just want to thank you, thought it was just an excellent presentation.
Since you've got the program...
There you go.
The lady that organizes this whole thing, Donna Smith?
Gary and Donna Smith.
She puts her heart into this, because a lot of effort to get the information... She puts her heart into this, because a lot of effort to get the information out and to plan the event and to plan the meal and to get everybody there, and, um, I just wanted to give a shout out, because it is, it's a lot of work to put on an event, and I just think it's great that we have people in Beaver Creek who, who care and put their heart into things, so it was good.
I've had the luxury of going the previous two years to the events, and so I thank you guys for covering for me, but also that I think the more of us that show up at events like that, the more we present our appreciation for what it is they do, so I appreciate that. Vice Mayor?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No official report for city council, other than I'm happy to be back, and my husband and I are happy to announce that our son was born on New Year's Eve. Okay, daddy's little tax credit, so I was due originally January first, but we were able to schedule it in time on New Year's Eve, so we had a very different New Year's Eve this year, very fun, very exciting, and we're, I appreciate all the support. My son uses the Boffi that city council gave us as a gift every single day, it's a lifesaver, so I really appreciate all the support, and I'm happy to be back, so thank you.
Alright, thank you, we're glad you're back, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to mayor's time. I want to, I just got back from vacation, so thank you all very much for, for taking over. But the, so I enjoyed my vacation, I have not been to a whole lot since I got back. I already announced the Wright State Beaver Creek Night. But while I was gone, there was some discussion about a, the Dayton Business Journal's, uh, the article that Beaver Creek was highlighted in, and I've had a call from a county commissioner about, specifically about a C I C. And, uh, I just want to try to make it a little clear that this, while we have not taken official action as council on a C I C, it is something that has been discussed on numerous occasions. It is something that we actually approved in our budget, so it's not something that, as a shocker, maybe some misinterpreted the article even, or interpreted it properly, maybe I'm misinterpreting the article, but it's not something that is written in stone, so to speak. And we will have future discussions on that, quite open discussions, as to whether or not we need a C I C, and, uh, and we'll get into that argument when we get there. Fairborn has a C I C, I believe Xenia has a C I C, so there are, there are logical reasons that Beaver Creek may want to have one, and, uh, so expending some money to investigate that further and see what it takes and how, what the process is, then, you know, we've already approved that. But I just wanted to, to, you know, reach out to the county and say, this is something that is not a, while it's not a done deal, it's something that is a tool that is given to communities that if they wish to exercise it, and, uh, and we'll have discussions with the county, we'll have discussions amongst ourselves as to whether or not we move forward. But I just wanted to clarify that just a little bit, uh, as we move forward. With that, I just think, you know, we've had a good beginning to the year, and I'm looking forward to the rest of this year. And now, we will move on to the city manager's report, and I'm sure you will cover the Laffino Plaza Palooza.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that's first on the agendas, the Laffino Plaza Palooza, Tuesday, January twenty ninth, which that's tomorrow, and yes, that's the day it starts nose diving on the temperatures, but before it gets too cold, come on out, six to seven thirty P M. All ages are welcome. It brings your family and friends to try activity stations throughout the plaza, senior center, and community theater with demonstrations, crafts, games, and more. Take a tour throughout the entire building and enjoy refreshments while learning all about the programs we have to offer. So, this is, if you haven't been out to the Laffino Center and the much improved Senior, Senior Center in Laffino Plaza, let me say that, please come out and check it out. It's a great space, it's a community space, meant to be shared with the community that supported this. Also, I wanted, did want to mention that at the event, we will have renderings of the playgrounds that are in our two thousand and nineteen budget that we're going to be completing this year. The E J Nutter and Seville and Stafford Parks, we're going to have playground, uh, looking for, we'll have renderings and looking for input for those three playgrounds, three parks, so that's exciting. Give, come have a look at the renderings and give us your input. Also, participants can win a fifty dollar gift certificate for the parks and recreation. So, all those activities that we have, you know, you might be able to pick up a couple yoga classes on us or something of that sort. We're part, part of a camp or something to go towards, so come out tomorrow night between six and seven thirty at Laffino Plaza in the senior center.
Dress warm.
Dress warm. Also, just want to mention, this is coming up Saturday, February ninth, right around the corner. This is our seasonal job fair, we have this every year. It's really worked well with the number of people we need to have. These are all of our seasonal positions, from public service, maintenance workers, parks and recreational culture, that, these are the, from maintenance workers, help us cut the grass, camp directors, counselors, all the student interns, all those type of positions, the golf club, you know, without the seasonal jobs, it would be impossible for us to run all of these activities that we have. And planning development, even code enforcement, the student intern that we continue to have in our budget, which helps our code enforcement out tremendously. They get the experience, and we get a lot of help with the grass cutting, how high that is. So, please come out, nine to eleven thirty, at Beaver Creek Golf Club, Saturday, February ninth. Bring your resume and be prepared to be interviewed. We need a lot of good seasonal help, parents out there, if you're wanting your child to, to get a job, here you go, bring him out. There's all kinds of different activities that, that they can apply for, and we, uh, we really honestly never have been able, because the job market is tight, and there's a lot of jobs out there and a lot of, you know, but for those kids and, or college students that, you know, please come out and check us out. We could definitely use your help and your skill set, so, and we'll, we'll train you where, as needed, so don't worry about that. But come out to the golf club at Saturday, February ninth. And do you want to build a snowman? It might be an iceman here in a couple days, but it is still here, we are waiting through February eleventh, so you have another couple weeks here to submit a photo to parks@beavercreechohio.gov. So, these last couple snowstorms, if you build a snowman, make, and you took pictures of the kids with the snowman, and please submit those photos to parks@beavercreechohio.gov. The competition, what will happen is the photos that we receive from that will post on the city's Facebook page from February fifteenth to the twenty second, so a week, and then basically, you'll be voting on it by clicking the likes, and whoever gets the most likes on that photo wins the competition. So, that'd be, that's always a lot of fun, they had winners last year. I thought we were going to get away with not being able to have pictures of that, but unfortunately, it did snow, so there should be a lot of competition this year, so please submit those pictures, we'd enjoy to see them. And that's all I have.
Alright, well, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? I see you shaking your head, but do we have a scout in the audience by chance? If there's a scout in the audience, we'd love for you to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what troop you're with. Come on up here to the, come up here to the microphone, if you don't mind.
Think Mom has to come.
Yes. Just speak right into that microphone and tell us who you are and why you're here. There you go.
My name's Marcus. My pack's three seventy, I'm just.
He's a Cub Scout, he had to come and, and see you guys meet for his Arrow of Light, so.
And he's doing a fantastic job of it right now, so. Are you, did you enjoy your stay?
Yes.
Alright, that's, that's the right answer, so thank you. See there? It's not so hard to get up in front of there, is it?
Okay.
Well, listen, you have, you have an enjoyable evening, and if there's anything you need from us, you let us know, okay?
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Seeing none, we will move forward. We, uh, have a, need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section one twenty one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of Conference with City Attorney Concerned Disputes Involved in the City That Are Subject to Pending or Imminent Court Action.
Thank you, do I have a second? We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van? Mayor Stone?
Yes, and for the public consideration, there will be no action taken, so they, while we will come back to reconvene and adjourn, there will be no action taken after this, other than this executive session, so with that, the, I think we'll go off air as well, so we'll see you all in TV land at another time. Thank you very much.